for the August 8, 2017 session, the afternoon portion of the board meeting. And I know we've got a couple of items for hearing today. We have an off-agenda presenter, and we'll get to that at the close of the published items. But we also have a recognition and a presentation by some of the folks from chaplaincy. So we'll get to that in a moment as well. But first, we've got to call the role to establish a quorum, and then we'll see if there's any other items in order we need to take, and then we'll go from there. So, hello?
Okay. Supervisors Frost, here. Kennedy, Peters, here. Serna, and Natoli, here. And you have a quorum.
Okay. All right. Any items then to continue? If not, then?
Nope.
All right. So let's go ahead and call our first item. We actually have a presentation and another presentation, so.
Yeah. So, item 33 is the Presentation of Resolution congratulating Law Enforcement Chaplaincy upon the occasion of its 40th anniversary.
Okay. Well, I'm going to invite Mindy Russell, Chaplain Russell, to come to the podium, and make a presentation. And then I'll give her an opportunity to make a presentation talking about what's happened over the past 40 years. So I'll be right down.
And this is Chaplain Rhonda. She's part of our community chaplain's program. How exciting.
Okay. To start off the afternoon, then, we want to take the opportunity as a board, and certainly as a community, to recognize 40 years, the 40th anniversary of this organization, the Law Enforcement Chaplaincy of Sacramento, and its service to our community. And I know that Chaplain Mindy and her associate here will give us an overview of some of the things that you've been involved in over those 40 years. Mindy, I don't think has been associated with us all 40 years, but a good portion of it. She's probably logged 40 years worth of time in about 20. But I think certainly this board and people in the audience will quickly recognize the efforts of this organization, because they are pretty omnipresent when either a tragic event, but some event that involves, you know, folks, whether in a very personal situation, or one that's of a much broader community impact. And they're there to certainly not just to counsel and to help people agree, but to help recover, to be supportive, and certainly have done many, many good deeds. And their good work is, again, as I said, very evident in this community. And so this resolution, I won't read all the whereasings, but certainly details the foundation of this organization. Actually, it started out, I guess, as the Greater Sacramento Police Chaplaincy. 1977 was chartered, and it went on to become, as it's known now, the Law Enforcement Chaplaincy of Sacramento. And again, Chaplain Mindy and her associates, again, are accompanied by certainly the professional staff, but many, many volunteers. And I don't know how many volunteers you have.
150.
150 volunteers who are on call 24/7 to respond to, as I said, incidents and accidents and community events, and not always ones that are sad, certainly ones where we celebrate life in this community and celebrate the work of those who protect us, first responders and such. But again, it's been truly a model for other communities, certainly in this state and nation. And I know that the Law Enforcement Chaplaincy of Sacramento has been recognized nationally by former presidents, attorney generals, and many others for their good work. And their ministry is one of obviously providing help to a community whenever it's needed and wherever it's needed. And so, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, and certainly the people of Sacramento County, Chaplain Russell, and to our chaplaincy, this board is very pleased to honor and to recognize you and all those who are associated with your organization for the good work that you do in this community each and every day. And I think the comfort and the counsel, and certainly the contributions you've made over now the course of four decades. And we want to wish you well as you move forward, embark upon hopefully another 40 years, if not more, in serving this community, and wish you every success as you continue to bring peace and comfort and consolation to thousands of people here in this community, or tens of thousands of people, but certainly as you do that throughout the state and nation. So you're truly a leader, and we thank you. You've been a blessing to this community, each and every one of you. And we congratulate you on 40 years, offer this resolution to you and your organization. And with that, say thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yes.
Can I take a picture of you?
Oh, yeah.
Real quick?
Yeah, we can. Take your picture. We'll do a presentation.
All righty. Real quick.
Next up.
You want to take a picture?
What I have to do is push this button. There you go.
Okay.
Right here.
Uh-oh. Did it die on me?
It died?
I'll take my camera.
Okay, can you?
Good. Thank you.
Now, as you kind of tell us a little bit more about the 40 years of service.
Well, this says 30 seconds. I'll take a couple more minutes than that, okay?
Yep.
So, basically, it did start out as just the police and sheriff, but now, 40 years later, we are serving 19 different law enforcement agencies, 16 school districts, and several businesses, as well as churches and neighborhoods. So we are all over this county, being able to take our professional, subjectmatic experts in the area of trauma, and taking them where people need our help at right at that moment. So we're the only organization here in the county that does these things, makes the death notifications for the coroner's office, and actually brings hope in very desperate situations. Last year, we did over 4,000 call-outs. What a change from the first year, when we did 24. 24 in 1977, and there was two chaplains. Now 150 chaplains, and we're in, as well as not only reactive, but proactive. We are in the schools, because our kids are in crisis. And this year, our emphasis is on suicide awareness, because as you have seen in the news lately, now we're seeing an increase in our young women. It is the second-leading cause of death in our nation for teenagers between the ages of 13 to 15. We've got to stop it, and we are part of the solution. So I thank you, Board of Supervisors. I've gotten to tell you a little bit about what we've done. We are nationwide-recognized, so all of the things that we do, that you read about in the newspaper here, and probably don't get everything on that, but the worldwide things from the Unabomber, that was right here in town, Yosemite, we were there for the murders down there, the flooding, all of the things that are nationwide attention were called out to be able to help the families. And quite frankly, we do a good job at what we do, because we change people from being bitter to better, and we help them through the worst times of their lives. So it's a strong organization. We thank you for your support, for allowing us to do this. And we just, our future, what we want to do is to continue to strive to train more people, so we can be out there in more ways.
You know, Mindy, I would just say, too, that you talked about some of the major events where you were, chaplaincy was involved, and certainly you were there in Columbine, and I believe even in 9/11 in New York City, you yourself personally, and others. And yet, I think about, and I've been at different places where you've been there in a time of very personal tragedy, and you and your counselors are there to offer advice. And so whether it's, you know, something as personal as the loss of a loved one right here in this community, to something that, you know, makes national headlines, where we have tremendous loss of life and tremendous tragedy. And I think that's where, again, you really cut across those boundaries, and you have diversity of faith and cultures that are represented in your chaplaincy, and you, I think, are very sensitive in your training and responding to, you know, those situations, because recognizing we are a big community with many different facets and many different people from different walks of life. But you're there whenever needed. So again, I certainly thank you on behalf of people. I know Supervisor Kennedy, you had some comments.
Yeah, just a couple of things. One is, you know, the whole skill set of turning things from bitter to better, we could use that in a lot of other county departments, so.
Bring it on.
I do want to just one more time say, you know, thank you. I got to know Mindy during a horrific situation in District 2, and also many of the people who are of the 150 core. And it's amazing, you don't just touch the lives of the people who are directly impacted, but it's a ripple effect, like throwing a pebble into the lake. I mean, you really reach out and help the community when there's something like that. So I've seen it firsthand. I want to thank you for all your efforts.
Thank you.
I concur.
All right. Well, thank you all very much.
Well, thank you, Mindy. And carry back to your members of your organization. Again, we certainly appreciate all that you do, and all that you continue to do, and all that you've done, and we wish you well. So, thanks.
Thank you so much.
You bet. Okay. With that, then, we'll go to our hearing items. I think you can call 35 and 36, I believe, together. And then we'll have to, I think you have to be sworn on one of those. Is that right?
Excuse me?
You have to be sworn.
On 35.
On 35, right. Okay.
Item 35 and 36 is the ARCO facility at Watt and Blackfoot project, a zoning ordinance amendment, use permit, and design review for a property located at the southeast intersection of Watt Avenue and Blackfoot Way in the Antelope Community. The environmental document is a negative declaration. Also, we have the ABC license hearing to determine whether public convenience would be served by issuance of a Type 20 liquor license to ARCO AM PM located at the southeast intersection of Watt Avenue and Blackfoot Way in the Antelope Community.
Okay. Do you want to swear, folks?
Sure.
And just, I would just note, those that have signed up for this, or may think you wish to address this item, the use does require an affirmation of the presentation under oath, so the clerk will swear you in if you want to stand and be sworn, so.
Okay. Please raise your right hand in the appropriate responses I do. Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give this board is the truth? So help you God, if you do not swear, do you so affirm?
Yes.
And when you come to the podium, please state your name for the record in the statement I have been sworn.
Okay, very good. Thanks. I have several folks signed up, including the applicant's representative, as well as several residents from the area. So we'll, once we have the staff presentation, and any questions from the board, and any applicants' presentation, we'll call upon others that are here today to talk to either items 35 or 36. So, all right. LeAnn.
All right. Thank you very much, LeAnn Moffett, your county planning director. And I do have a PowerPoint presentation. I have two back-to-back presentations to provide here. So the item before you today, the first item, they're both related to the ARCO. There's a proposed new ARCO facility at Watt Avenue and Blackfoot Way. The facility is located at the southeast intersection of Watt Avenue and Blackfoot Way in the Antelope Community. And the applicant is requesting to be allowed to build a ARCO gas station with an AM PM convenience store, an automatic car wash, and a Phase 2 adjacent 5,500-square-foot retail building in the LC commercial zone. The item was originally rezoned to its current LC zoning back in 1998, and when that zoning was put in place, the zoning ordinance included prohibition on auto service stations and car washes. And so the applicant is requesting an amendment to that zoning ordinance to delete that line item as a prohibition. In addition, service stations are all required to get a conditional use permit from the Board of Supervisors, so they are also requesting that use permit for the ARCO facility, car wash, and fuel canopy with eight dispensers, and design review to comply with the countywide design guidelines for both the ARCO station, as well as the adjacent retail building. Retail uses are permitted by right, so that component would really only typically be subject to design review, but we are running it through altogether as one project. This is the site plan, and the north arrow is a little bit off to the left, so it's a little bit, you have to kind of orient yourself to the north, with Watt sort of going north and south. Off to the right is actually the southern boundary. At the top of the building, there is an adjacent mini storage facility with the building that backs up immediately to the property line. And then there are also some residences on a cul-de-sac at the southeastern portion of the site. So over on the left of this graphic is the auto service station in the middle. The canopies are out on Watt, and behind the service station facility is a car wash. And then the building on the right-hand side is the future Phase 2 retail facility. So again, I think I've already mentioned that the applicant is proposing to develop the project in two phases, with the ARCO component first. There's also an easement abandonment to allow access from Watt Avenue. The driveway on Watt will be restricted to ride-in, ride-out, turning movements only. And then the Phase 2 component will be the retail building. And then we'll have to be some realignment of drainage in the area. And there will also be a sort of drainage detention basin back behind the facility. The convenience store and gas station is requested to be open on a 24-hour basis. We do have conditions that would limit the car wash operations to the hours of between 7:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. And the second presentation that I will be giving you has to do with their request to be able to serve beer and wine on the site. This is some proposed elevations for the convenience store, as well as a rendering of the future facility. And I wanted to point out, in the graphic in the upper right-hand side, you can see a lot of green behind the ARCO facility and the car wash. And so there have been a lot of discussions about the potential for loitering in that area that's a gap between the mini storage and the houses, and the new eight-foot masonry wall back there. And so we have conditioned the site to fence that off with a six-foot tubular steel, aka wrought iron fencing, with only one gate entry, to keep folks from loitering or potentially camping in that area. The applicant will also be installing some LED lighting that has the ability to dim at night, as well as overall 32 cameras, some of which will be pointed back at that area, so that that area can be monitored to make sure that there's not unwanted intrusion into that green space and detention area back there. The item was reviewed by the Antelope Community Planning Advisory Council on June 2 and July 7. The Center Unified School District provided notices to families of students enrolled at the adjacent elementary school. There was public comment at the Antelope CPAC meeting on March 2, 2017. Those workshops had been earlier workshops. There were a fair number of comments by neighbors about the proximity and maintenance of existing gas stations in the Antelope area, questions about access onto the site, pedestrian safety, potential retail tenants, and the fencing design. There were 10 members of the public who spoke in opposition regarding some of those issues, traffic and noise, lighting and glare, sufficient gas stations and convenience stores in the area, concern about 24-hour operations, questions about alcohol sales, and potential increase in loitering and other nuisances, and three members of the public who spoke in support of the project. The Antelope CPAC did end up recommending approval of the proposal on a 3 to 2 vote. Staff has, is before you today recommending approval. We do feel that the site has remained vacant for the last 20 years. We've worked very hard with the applicant on a design and a set of conditions that we think can address the concerns. We've imposed conditions limiting the car wash hours. We've imposed a number of sheriff conditions, as well as the additional fencing that I spoke of before. And the applicant is proposing to have cameras and other security measures, as well as a relatively new condition about landscaping, to try to use prickly and other sorts of landscaping to deter loitering. The Planning Commission considered this on June 12, and the item is in front of you with their recommendation, recommended approval on a 5 to 0 vote. So this slide lists the actions that you would take. Those are detailed in your staff report, so I won't read them aloud here. But these are the specific actions that would be before you today. And then this slide is kind of an oblique aerial that I'll end on, and it does show that tubular steel wrought iron fencing and the Phase 2 portion of the site, I think I didn't say this before, would also be fenced off. And if they don't move forward to construct the retail building in Phase 1, we would also make sure that that's fenced off until they go back in and construct that retail building.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
LeAnn, when this was rezoned in 1998, a lot of automotive uses were restricted, because this was a rezone from a business professional to limited commercial at the time. And it wasn't just an auto service station, it was most automotive uses were restricted. Was there, the staff report just identifies that, but was anybody able to go back and take a look at the conversation? If I remember right, I think either Supervisor Cox or Supervisor Nilo represented the area at the time. And we must have had some discussion about this, if it was a rezone at the time. Do you have any additional information behind that?
I would have to turn to Wendy Hartman, who's been our day-to-day project manager, to see if she has anything additional.
Again, I didn't want to, you can finish your presentation, but it just occurred to me that that background would be important. So if you want to go ahead and go through it, then maybe Wendy.
Okay. I can go through the alcohol one, if you want to get through that. And then I can have Wendy come up and see what she might have to add on that topic.
Okay.
All right. Could I have the second PowerPoint up, and we can go through the request for the alcohol license while we're on this? All right. So the graphics that you're going to see are going to look very similar. I've pretty much already covered where the location is. The item before you is essentially, it's a request to the state for the ARCO AM PM to be able to sell beer and wine. This is in a high-crime area, according to the sheriff's data, so that requires the applicant to come before the board to request a finding, a PCN finding, before the state will issue the alcohol license. So that's what we're here to do today on that. So this is a beer and wine alcohol license. We've already looked at the site plan. This is the interior floor plan of the facility, and how it lays out with the cashier and sales areas. Again, they're requesting a beer and wine type license. This would be the first license in this census tract, although there are areas to the south along Watt Avenue where one can get beer and wine at other facilities and liquor stores. But this would be the first facility within this census tract, so it's not over-concentrated. But this would be the first facility within this census tract, so it's not over-concentrated. The applicant has expressed the need for the liquor license due to the desire for their customers to have a one-stop option for gas, beer, and wine, groceries, and other products. The convenience store and gas station would be open 24 hours. However, as with many similar county facilities, we do restrict the hours so that alcohol hours of sale would be between 6:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m., so they would not be able to sell alcohol after 10:00 p.m. And we also apply our typical condition via the sheriff for no single sales of beer, wine coolers, and no spirits, although this isn't spirits, less than 750, but no wine or spirits, or no wine less than 750. They're not getting a full alcohol. The application was considered by the Community Planning Advisory Council at the same meeting as before. Many of the same comments that I covered in the prior presentation, since the CPAC considered the item sort of as one. And there were the same speakers concerned about that PCN license as well. The Antelope CPAC vote was the same as for the overall use permit and zoning ordinance amendment. It was a three-to-two vote. The sheriff does support this with the imposition of their conditions, which is a letter attached to your staff report, and therefore, staff is also recommending approval. And the recommended action is at the bottom of the slide. So that pretty much covers the alcohol portion of this as well.
Okay, you're going to have Wendy come up in a moment. There may be other questions of you, LeAnn, as well, but I guess part of my question will be to you and to Wendy. So what's changed? I assume planning department recommended, or maybe you didn't recommend, in 1998, and again, 19 years have transpired.
Right.
But clearly, there was a heavy emphasis on no automotive and/or motorcycle repair uses, things associated with automotive, as well as restrictions on liquor store, bar tavern. And now we have both the PCN coupled with an automotive use here. Obviously, it has another building that may someday house a restaurant or something else. But I guess that history is important to me. I certainly was a member of the board at the time, and all I saw was that reference to that zoning ordinance. And I do recall those years, we had a good deal of conversation about numbers of service stations, proliferation on many corners in the county, certainly design elements, and some of those, you know, over time have got approved. There's been improvements certainly relative to security and some of the landscaping requirements over the course of nearly 20 years. But I guess, I am curious, because clearly, whatever the board did, that zoning in 1998 made it pretty clear that didn't anticipate automotive uses, at least under that scenario versus what's being asked here today, so.
Right. I'll have Wendy get up. I mean, I will say, we have really tried to modernize a lot of our reviews of these AM PM-type stores. The board has debated and gone different ways on different stores in different locations. We have a more robust design review program, and we have developed over the years a fair amount of conditions. But obviously, it certainly is discretionary on the part of the board, whether you think this site is appropriate, and that history may be relevant to that. So let me see what Wendy can add about the prior rezon.
Thanks. And then other board members may have questions as well, so. Good afternoon, Wendy.
Good afternoon, Wendy Hartman with Planning and Environmental, Office of Environmental Review.
Got to speak up a little bit, if you may.
Sorry.
Stand between the two.
Stand between the two mic.
There you go.
All right. There was a very brief discussion of uses in the original staff report from 1998 that talked about concerns with compatibility of issues related to noise, as well as potential uses that would be intense, such as hospitals or hotels for traffic reasons and not necessarily for noise reasons. As LeAnn has mentioned, we have significantly updated the county's development standards and design review requirements to hopefully address some of the concerns that are typically associated with these uses. But it is a discretionary permit and therefore is up to your approval on whether or not it's appropriate at this particular location.
So the previous rezon, it was 1997 application, it looks like it was approved in 1998.
Correct.
It was, at least from what I could tell here, the attachment was country center.
Correct.
Did it involve any other property? Did it involve the mini storages or any of the residential properties, or was it solely for this corner from BP to LC at the time?
It looked like it was just for this corner. They only rezoned this piece. The mini storage piece remained BP. There were some documents in the prior file that talked about difficulty in trying to develop the site over the years, and obviously, that has not changed in the last 19, 20 years since the prior approval of the rezon.
But limited commercial, limited only in a sense by what the zoning provides for that, and then any restricted uses, which were largely of the automotive. And some other ones that could be, again, potentially problematic with massage parlors, pawn shops, and other things.
Correct.
But for the most part, it was very clear about automotive uses being restricted previously, so. Okay, that's all I needed to know, thanks. Any other member of the board, any questions of staff, this gentleman, Ross?
LeAnn, I wanted to ask, one of the concerns from the public was around, there's too many gas stations. How do you determine how many gas stations in an area? And is it too many? Obviously, you're recommending it, so can you give me some feedback on that?
Yeah, I mean, I'll be honest, I don't think planning has a specific standard of what's reasonable. I think in a lot of ways, we do leave that up to the market. We certainly had issues in the past historically, when we had multiple corners that all had gas stations, and then gas stations would go away, leaving a blighted corner. So I think that's historically one of the reasons for, amongst other issues, for having board review of gas stations, because it had been very common way back in the day to have small remnant pieces that had four gas stations at every corner, and only one survived. And the other three were small and difficult to redevelop into some other use. In this case, there isn't another gas station in the immediate corner area, so we don't see that sort of problem here. There is other facilities up and down Watt Avenue, but I don't think we see a particular over-concentration of gas stations right in this immediate vicinity.
And I had a question regarding the picture here that you have on the screen shows the wrought iron fence, but it is seven, the requirement is seven feet high. That doesn't look seven feet high, but it doesn't look like a really tall fence that someone couldn't climb over, but it could be. It is seven feet high, that's the minimum for the whole entire front wrought iron fence.
The wrought iron, actually, the condition specifies a six-foot-tall wrought iron right now. We could make that taller if you wished. The required fencing is actually the rear fencing, and that's the eight-foot masonry wall. So this wrought iron fence that is shown here is really an added condition that's not a standard requirement in the zoning code specifically to try to keep people out of that excess drainage and unused area.
And six feet is probably a standard factory size, I imagine.
Yeah.
And the landscaping behind that fence, they're going to have that, it looks like grass, is that what they're, they will be maintaining the landscape behind that.
They are, mm-hmm. They're required to maintain the landscaping. They actually have to come back to us with a specific landscape design. And condition number eight in attachment two requires the SEPTED, Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design, be considered in the improvement in landscaping plan. So we'll be looking for a landscaping plan that doesn't allow a lot of shrubs that people can hide in, as well as planting types that discourage people from sleeping on it or laying on it. It makes it, you know, less enjoyable to be around. And then part of it's going to be cobbled, because there's going to be a drainage area in there. So where the drainage portion is, there will probably be some sort of rock and cobbles on the ground, you know, not lawn. In general, the new drought-tolerant landscaping plans also don't allow terribly much actual lawn to be planted, so it won't look like lawn, per se.
When you look at the picture, you think you had a forest there.
What's that?
You look at the picture, it looks like a forest.
It does look like a forest in there.
I think it's a little exaggerated.
Pretty, so, yeah. So we'll have to be looking at the detailed landscape plan. They do, I mean, they will be planting some trees, and they actually, one of their exhibits does have a preliminary landscape plan.
But the Phase Two isn't going to go in right away, but that wrought iron fence is going to be a requirement all the way around the front of that retail building, correct?
Yes, the wrought iron fence, before the retail building is built, the fence will have to come out and take in what's the future parking lot. So that's all fenced off with a nice wrought iron instead of chain link, so that people can't camp there.
And it seems like the, I don't know how noisy car washes are, but I'm assuming that was covered in your research, that the sound decibels, that it's under the required sound requirements for the residential. It's, the car wash isn't in front of the houses, it's over just a little bit in front of the commercial location, so I'm assuming-
Where is the car wash on this slide?
Let me go back to the site plan. The car wash is at the top of this exhibit. I don't know if I can get.
Top left.
It won't show up, okay. So the canopy is on the bottom, and then the ARCO AM PM store, and then the car wash is at the north, or the east side, which is the top of the white boxes in this map.
So it's that little, looks like an easement road almost, that goes up behind the store?
Exactly.
Okay.
And so it is closer to the mini storage, but there are homes, you can see the homes in this graphic here on the cul-de-sac. So off to the right, you can see a house footprint here on this map. And that's why we're requiring the eight-foot masonry wall in between the site and the homes.
Does that mitigate the sound factor from the car wash?
Yes. So yes, and they also have to comply with a noise ordinance as well.
I mean, in Citrus Heights, we had, it had to be under a certain amount of decibels, and so as long as it was, so that's what we're doing at the county also.
Absolutely. So we did a noise study. The noise study showed that there wouldn't be noise impacts, and if there were, they would still have to comply with a noise ordinance.
Where are the vacuum cleaners on that?
I don't think that there are vacuum, I think this is one of those ARCO ones where you drive through. It's not like the full-service ones, like the quick quack where you then get out and vacuum.
That's where you really get the noise, is the vacuum.
Yeah, the vacuum cleaners, yeah. And the blower is presumably, because you go in on the right of this graphic and you exit away from the homes.
They're on Black, facing Blackfoot.
Yeah, facing Blackfoot.
And the lighting at night that shines into the back there doesn't shine into the neighborhood, is that correct?
That is correct, and it would be helpful for the applicant to describe a little bit more. I understand that they're trying to use some LED technologies that, in this area, that are motion triggered, and so it'd be good for them to talk about that directly.
Okay.
I'm picturing it something like we have in the county parking lot area over here, where the LED lights are on, but they're kind of dim, and then when you walk out there, they get triggered.
Yeah.
Because they didn't want them bright all the time adjacent to the houses, and then people aren't supposed to be in that area. So it would be noticeable when the lights go on if there's somebody back there, but that would be good for the applicant to speak about directly.
Okay, great.
Is that something that we can require? You said, I'm not sure you said that was going to happen. Is that something we could require?
It's described in their project description, so we could add that as a condition. I think we just generally speak to their project description, but we could add it.
Yeah.
We might need to continue the item if we need to add it as a condition to get that correctly.
Okay, that's all I have right now.
Okay, any other questions? If not, then thank you, LeAnn. We have several speakers. Well, the applicant has the opportunity to come forward initially, and so Mr. Tobin, behalf of the applicant. And if you've been sworn, please say so when you start your testimony.
Members of the board, Peter Tobin with Barghousen Engineers, and I have been sworn. This is a project that we've been working on for well over a year with the planning staff, and they've been really helpful on helping us actually design it and make changes. And our client, who currently owns a couple of ARCOs, one in Rockland, one in Auburn, he's very successful in terms of a franchisee. He has an excellent reputation with British Petroleum and overall in the industry. So the key to a site like this is to have a franchisee that's experienced, and he's a no-nonsense kind of guy, so in terms of loitering, he has ways to eliminate and minimize loitering just by training his employees and constantly training his employees. So what I want to do is I want to go over the site plan, and I've marked up this particular site plan with the seven-foot-high wrought iron fence, and I'm going to point to that in a second here. But the C-store in itself has a tremendous amount of glass, so people, the police, can see in and out. That design has changed over the years. In terms of cameras, a normal facility like this has 32 cameras. He's going to install 64 cameras. So 32 cameras will be part of the C-store and the car wash and the canopy, and then the other 32 cameras will be placed throughout the landscape areas, and all of it will be recorded, and all of it will be monitored. In terms of loitering, the last thing a customer wants of experience is being uncomfortable. And I know Ravinder is really good at this, as previously mentioned. He's got his employees in train so that they go out there, they fix a problem that's happening, and they move on. They don't use the hammer principle on anybody or that. They just start talking to them and say, hey, you know, our customers are feeling uncomfortable, can you move on? And he's very successful with that. So I'm going to go ahead and point to this exhibit here. You can see that right here in red, that's the proposed wrought iron fence. And because we're not going to install Phase Two at this time, we're going to go ahead and bring that wrought iron fence out to Watt, still install the landscape buffer, and then bring that wrought iron fence down to a proposed eight-foot-high masonry wall against this area here. So currently, there's a wood fence from here to here. There's been issues with pedestrians going from this area and walking kind of through I believe they fixed some of the fencing, but it's pretty easy to get through there. That's going to be solved with an eight-foot-high block wall, and that was a requirement that the sheriff had to go from six feet to eight feet. So this entire area back in here will be fenced off. There's going to be cobbles in the back, and the reason why we have that is for storm detention, so it will not be friendly for somebody to walk back there at all. It's going to be slopy, it's going to have a little depressed areas for water to sit in and then eventually drain out. The landscaping that was shown in that one rendering, that's an example of a render kind of gone crazy with too many trees, which simply not having that many trees. That's not the goal at all. So this entire area is going to be shut off. We've got the eight-foot-high block wall here and here, a tremendous improvement over what currently exists. A lot of the issues that we've heard previously from the neighbors is a lot of people park along Watt Avenue at night. They crank up the music. There are also people that on the weekends try to sell stuff along Blackfoot, I should say, Blackfoot Way. So that's not good for business, and I'm firmly convinced that the franchisee is going to take care of that. And just because we've got eyes and ears on the whole area, this area is a lot more patrolled in a lot of different ways.
Speaker Frost, your question?
So even though the county is only requiring six feet, you're putting seven-foot wrought iron?
Correct.
And the eight-foot block wall where it ends at the storage facility, is there an opening? There's no way, is there an opening whereby someone could get into this enclosed area there, or is that like a building there, or is it a wood fence?
This is a building wall that's about 18-foot tall all the way up to our-
And so that block wall will go right up, no one can get through there?
Correct, it'll be completely enclosed.
And there won't be any neighborhood gate from the neighborhood into that?
Correct, there will be a maintenance gate right in this area here so they can get in there, clean, and do what they need to do. clean and do what they need to do.
Thank you.
So, the, okay, the entire site is LED lighting, and what happens here, what we've created over the last few years, is that as a car comes in underneath the canopy, the lighting underneath the canopy all lights up, and as the car leaves, about four or five minutes after they leave, all the lights dim back down. What the franchisee has also agreed to do at 9:30 or 10 o'clock at night, shut off the canopy fascia. There's the, there's the blue LED light, and there's also white Arco channel letters, he's going to turn those completely off. So that will also assist with any lighting issues. And in terms of traffic, most of the cars are going to be coming off of Watt Avenue, so as they come in, the headlights themselves are going to be towards the building, or they're going to be towards Watt Avenue, and of course, we've got a big berm along Watt Avenue, which will break down a lot of that, a lot of those lights. So we believe that this particular development is going to solve a lot of the current problems that the neighbors have expressed over the last few months, and over the last several neighborhood meetings. We agree with all the conditions of approval, and we're here to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Peter. I'm Ms. Frost.
I just had a question relating to the canopy, how high is the canopy?
The clearance is about 13 feet, the total height is about 17 feet.
So, but the lighting on the canopy goes, does it go down, or does it go out?
It's all, it's all shielded downward, it's in, it's all recessed in the, in the face of the, the ceiling of the canopy itself.
So it doesn't, it's not going to go across over into the neighborhood, it's going down?
No, not at all, we've created, we've created different LED packages where, and we're going to use it on this one too, the lighting will actually shine on the car where you're, where you're pumping gas. It's not one of these old canopies where it's just, it's just way too much lighting, and it's pretty obnoxious, frankly. But we're going to be using three or four different types of LED lights, like a floodlight, a focus light, so that it's only, you're only lighting up the areas where you truly need light, so.
Supervisor Peters?
Thank you. On the car wash, is it open 24 hours? It is open from, what are the hours of the car wash?
Currently, there's 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
Okay. And at 10:00 PM, last car is out, do, are the entrance and the exit blocked from people going in the car wash?
There'll be, there'll be security doors that come down.
Security gate comes down?
Yes.
Okay, so, okay.
People wash their car at 10 o'clock at night?
Oh, yeah.
Well, you know, that's, that's one thing, it's, it's a good question.
The main thing I was after was keeping people out of the tunnel from, you know, selling drugs or something like that, so that, I found that that's important to have that locked.
You know, and our client is a really good neighbor, he even said, hey, if there's any issues with any noise, any concerns with people, we'll shut it down at 9:00 PM.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, Peter, so, this is showing a Phase Two, a lot of work's going into putting a wrought iron fence, non-standard, so it's going to be higher, you're going to put in some sort of landscaping, obviously, you clarified whether it was going to be forested woods or something less than that. So I'm curious, there's no requirement here that Phase Two be developed in any particular sequence, I know it's a significant investment to put a service station in with all the pertinent structures. What's, you know, again, that, there's no condition, that could sit there for another 20 years, and somebody could come back in and ask for another service station along the road if they wanted to, so I guess I'm curious as to what is the plan, why wouldn't we develop this all at one time?
Well, he's currently going through financing and making the whole thing pencil out. Currently, he wants to get the AMPM up and running, then it's a lot more marketable. So, if he does develop Phase Two, we're probably looking at about a year to seriously get some potential buyers in there to develop that, so.
Is it possible there would be another, a liquor store in the strip center? In addition to what the request for liquor in the AMPM?
I don't see that happening, no, no. To me, it's just retail, maybe a small subway, that sort of thing, that's the only, that's the intent.
Just to that point, in fact, I appreciate Supervisor Peters asking that, because I'm going to ask the planning staff, so with this rezone, are they getting the exception for the service station and the car wash, but do the prohibitions stay in place relative to liquor store and to all the other automotive uses? Or are we taking them all off for the entirety of the site?
We are not taking them all off. If you look at the strikeout in bold ordinance, which is your first ordinance attachment, you can see what is stricken and what is not. So, a lot of the other auto items remain restricted.
I've got to find the strikeout, just a minute.
Sure.
Is that attachment two?
It's the first ordinance, it's just ordinance. Immediately follows the board report.
After the signature page, then two more pages?
After the signature page, it goes straight into the ordinance. And so there are three items that are stricken, auto service station primary, auto service station, another version of primary with a bunch of other words, and secondary auto service station, rebuilt auto wash.
While you're looking, it says, it's more of a lodge, a fraternal lodge-hall liquor store.
Yeah, there should be a paragraph in there, yeah. There's a formatting problem there, so liquor store remains prohibited.
Okay, so, what I'm wanting to hear you say is that there will not be a liquor store allowed in the strip center, or whatever they're calling it, that's next door to it.
There is not a liquor store allowed in the adjacent strip center unless they applied to come back to the board and reamend this ordinance, which they are not requesting at this point in time.
Thank you so much.
I actually did have one other correction when you're done with-
Okay, but I wanted a question to follow on then, so I found one to strike out. But there wasn't a prohibition against a convenience store, which would acquire the use permit, in the, in the original LC zoning. So I take it that you could actually have, you know, if this owner chose to, you have a convenience market within the AMPM, but if someone wanted to put a convenience store right next door to it, that's not a prohibited use, it may require a use permit if it got hours beyond a certain extent. Is the ability to prohibit that as a part of this consideration today, because I don't think that that's the type of use, and certainly, you know, I want to hear from the supervisor of the district, but this was designed so you would have less objectionable uses, and, you know, that's arguable, obviously, but convenience store was permitted, again, requiring a use permit, that may have changed over the last 20 years relative to that, but it would seem to me that's not something you want, to what Peter put, you know, maybe it's a subway or something akin to that, but, and I don't know that Arco would want another, you know, competing convenience store, but I've seen that too on different sites, and so, not with this over the Arco. So is there a way to get to that point here with what's before us today?
There is, you are correct, there is no prohibition on a convenience store, and it is possible to sell, to come back and request a PCN and liquor license to sell some amount of alcohol in a convenience store. That's not something that had come up, and we didn't restrict a second convenience store, we could contemplate that, that's not in here now.
Now, can I have any thoughts on that, Peter?
We don't, we don't have a problem with that, restricting it.
Okay, thanks.
I wanted to correct one thing in the record from my prior statements about the vacuum cleaners. There is one vacuum station, when you exit the car wash, if you turn left up against the north boundary of the Arco convenience station, there is a, one vacuum spot where you can stop and vacuum your car. It is generally shielded from the residences by both the Arco AMPM store, because it fronts on Blackfoot.
Could you put that up on the screen and point to it, I sometimes-
Here it comes.
Trying to understand, north, south, corner.
Yep, so here's the convenience store facility, there is, if you pull out of the car wash and you come here, there is a vacuum station right here.
Okay.
And the closest home behind the facility is here. So I did want to correct that.
Okay. And do we have standard conditions about the wall or something like that, that keeps the sound down there?
Yes, we did analyze noise, and there are, it is conditioned to comply with the noise ordinance.
Okay.
So.
And I, my understanding is on those vacuums that there are, I'll just call it different grades, for lack of a better term, the, some louder than others, and that you'd be required to have the lowest level sound of currently manufactured vacuum cleaners for cars?
Right, the acoustical report talks about pretty high-end acoustical domes that go over the vacuums themselves, and secondly, they're, they're on timers, so after a certain, like nine o'clock at night, eight o'clock at night, they shut off, they don't work anymore.
Okay, well that's, the shutting off is good, but still, the, you know, we don't want you to put in an inexpensive vacuum cleaner that's loud, that is one of the more irritating things to residents, I've found, in my experience.
And they end up replacing them really fast anyway, so that's, you're better off to do a high-quality one.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, any other questions for the applicant, Supervisor Frost, did you have questions? Sorry, Peter.
Yes, I wanted to ask LeAnn if we could add to the, those that are prohibited vaping lounge stores, tobacco, liquor, tattoo.
We can, yes, and we can analyze how that compares with the zoning code, I do think if we're going to be making changes to conditions, and particularly if we're going to change the list of uses, we probably do have to route this back through the Planning Commission, but we can certainly do that.
Well, there may be, like, on this list, it says social rehabilitation center, it's the last one on the list, and it says tattoo shop, I don't think of tattoo and social rehabilitation in the same-
There's a format, I think there's a formatting issue.
Formattings.
You think so?
Well, you know, it doesn't bring it-
Oh, I didn't see that.
Well, I didn't either till just now.
Well, the next one up here says, you know, parking lot and then the pawn shop, so, you know.
Parking lot or garage as primary use, pawn shop.
Yeah, I think the, no, there's definitely some formatting.
Sanitarium sideshow.
Yeah. So there's some paragraph ins that didn't happen here.
Yeah, and the next line has got psychiatric facility recycling center, yeah, that's interesting combo, and a sanitarium sideshow, I don't know what a sanitarium sideshow is.
Don't want it there, I don't think, though.
What is that?
I think whenever you see a capitalized, it's supposed to be on a separate line.
Oh.
I think my worry is that 20 years from now, when we're all happily retired, that some, that a planner doesn't miss it, because it doesn't have a comma.
Yeah, we'll have to correct the formatting.
Yeah.
So are you saying though, that, like, if we, if we, this is a high crime area, and it's a, I don't know, the community would really like a restaurant, or, you know, a sit-down restaurant, that's what the community would, would love to have, they've asked for it. But, I mean, it, you can get a lot of these kinds of places that are just, you know, I don't know, they don't seem to promote community, I mean, they, they don't seem like a great addition to the community. So are you saying that this has to go back to the Planning Commission to add vaping lounge to it?
I believe if we make a substantial change to the zoning ordinance piece, I think it would be County Council's recommendation that we do get a recommendation from the Planning Commission.
Well, it depends on what's substantial, if you go through here and figure out wherever there should be a comma, maybe most of the things will be taken care of.
Right, bar and tavern is already prohibited, I don't remember which other ones that you were interested in. Tattoo is already there. Tattoo is already there.
You had tobacco and vape, though.
I was thinking tobacco and vaping. Yeah, I don't see that, smoke shop listed here.
Well, that's not a substantial change, if you just add smoke shop.
Well, I think it may be, the zoning, the planning and zoning law says, says that if you have something, go to Planning Commission for a recommendation for a zoning code amendment, and then it comes to the board, and there's a substantial change, it has to go back, substantial meaning not just a typo or a rewording, but if you're actually changing the uses, it needs to go back to Planning Commission for another pass-through.
But it can be done very quickly? I mean, because a convenience store, I think it needs to be a part of that, too, I just thought, I heard the applicant agreed to that part, so.
We would intend to run it through as fast as we, as time allows.
Which could be Planning Commission, you could send it right back to them and say we want it back here in a 20-second, when do they meet next?
They meet on Monday nights, so get it on the next available agenda, and-
If we chose to do that, obviously.
It would have to be noticed as well, yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right, any other questions, Supervisor Frost?
No.
Okay, Peter, any else? You're done for now?
Okay.
All right, we have a number of the folks in the community have signed up here as well, I have three speakers signed up, and I'll take those in the order they were handed to me, and we also have a letter, I don't know, one of the speakers may wish to address that as well, but I have Ron Morish, Nicole, is it Mealy?
Mealy.
Mealy, okay, and then Robin Poole. So, Ron, you're first, come forward. And if you've been sworn, just say so before you start out, so.
My name is Ron Morish, and I've been sworn. I want to thank you, I did receive an invitation to come to the meeting to speak for the board, so I thank you for that.
Great, the noticing's working.
Yes, it is. I did attend the CPAC meeting, wasn't able to go to the Planning Commission meeting, and I thank the board for the questions that you've asked, you've obviously given it some consideration in this project, so I thank you for that. Sounds like you're pretty far along in the approval process, but I'm still going to state my opposition. I did submit a letter, I had five of my neighbors sign that letter in opposition for the same reasons also. There's a couple of questions I would like you to ask of the Planning Commission, if you would. I did hear your planner say that there was only, this was the first one in the census tract for the liquor license, or the beer and wine license, and I have a map, it's not as fancy as the PowerPoint presentation, it's my chicken scratch.
Okay, you can put it up on a spot if you want to there, Ron, right next to you.
On the white square, to your right.
Oh, you're going to embarrass me in public here?
No, not at all, I mean, but if it shows, oh, other way, turned up, so face up, oh, I see, there you go, okay, and maybe, turn it the other way, yeah, there you go, it does have all location, no.
No, the other one.
Right there, yeah, that was, so we can at least see the map, yeah. Okay?
Okay. I'll have to read it down here, too, my eyesight's gone with age over here, too.
There's another microphone closer to it there.
Yeah, can you, we can get handheld, just a minute.
This is fine, I can bend over, that'd be fine. There is a number of liquor stores and beer, that sell liquor and beer and wine in that area. I've got listed over, there's 12 of them, I've listed on there in numerical order there, there's, within two tenths of a mile in this project, there are two convenience stores that sell beer, wine, and liquor. So I don't know what the census tract encompasses, to say this is the first one in there, but you can walk south on Watt Avenue, you'll find Jesse's Food and Liquor and SR Food and Liquor Store within two tenths of, two tenths of a mile. There's a Shell Gas Station that sells beer and wine on that corner also, and behind there, there's a Food Max that sells beer and wine, all within four tenths of a mile. If you go north, seven tenths of a mile, you'll find, there's a Walmart that sells beer and wine, there's a Shell, another Shell Station that sells beer and wine, and across the street, a Union 76 that sells beer and wine. In behind that, there's another liquor store. So if you get within seven tenths of a mile, you've got six convenience stores in addition to the Walmart and the Food Max, all within an area, so I don't understand, you say there's one in that census tract, there's eight of them there, within seven tenths of a mile. There's also three car washes within seven tenths of a mile of that development. I don't know why we need four car washes, is that within that, that-
Location of there.
I should put my glasses on. Yeah, there's, and three gas stations, and this, this will be the fourth gas station within four tenths of a mile. And my concern, there is, there's an Arco, if you want to extend it to two, two miles out, you've got six gas stations, five car washes, nine convenience stores, and four grocery stores, because there's a Wincow and a Bell Air that all sell beer and wine. There is no shortage, in fact, they say there's, there's an oversupply already, and if this is, project is approved, and it's going to be successful, which they are a low-price leader, and I suspect that they will be, it'll probably be at the expense of some of the existing gas stations and convenience stores in there. And as you already mentioned, they're very hard to redevelop. We have a serious homeless problem in that area, there's a recycling area right behind that- There's a recycling area right behind that liquor store, two tenths of a mile from this project. If there's going to be a 24-hour operation, there's no 24-hour operation in this area. All the homeless and the people are going to congregate to that area. Excuse me. Also in that area, too, just to give you a pic, a general picture of it, to the south of it, there's a condominium complex, and they mentioned north, excuse me, east of it, there is a residential area back there in addition to the storage area. Across the street on the north side is an apartment complex. I live on Scotland Drive on the west side, and we're a single-family residential district. I understand this property has had, had a problem being developed, but we have an oversupply of these convenience stores and beer and wine stores, and undersupply of residential housing. And my recommendation is the board encourage the developer, if they're having trouble developing it, to develop it, since it's already a residential area, to redevelop it as, and since we have a shortage of residential housing, that they redevelop it as a residential area if they're having trouble selling it.
Ron, if you could summarize, please. If you could summarize, give everybody three minutes, so if you wanted anything else you want to say.
I was hoping, since I've got five neighbors I'm speaking for, that would give me some time. But my summarize is that we have an oversupply of this. I'd like you to question staff regarding the representation. This is the first, you know, beer and wine in that census tract when it's clearly not. You know, and, and I'm in opposition to it because I like to see something else in there, residential housing or a resident, but they can go ahead and sell the property. It'd be a nice infill project since it's surrounded by residential, excuse me, property in the area. And if they are successful in keeping people out of there, we already have a problem along Watt Avenue, they have, I don't know how to describe it, but they have these cutouts where they put these trees in there along the sidewalk, which is county property and maintained. Will happen if they can't keep in there, they're going to come across, we already have a problem with them sleeping in those areas right by our backyards.
Okay.
Thank you, do appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ron, you have, thank you for your diagram. Uh, maybe staff can be prepared to talk at the end of the testimony about the, about the census tracts.
We have a good graphic.
You usually give us a map, we don't, we don't.
It's attachment three to your PCN report, so if you look in that staff report and it shows that there are nearby places where you can buy beer and wine, and it clearly shows what the census tract is, which doesn't necessarily align, that's why we map things out a mile away, rather than just relying on the census tract, so that is.
And Ron, I don't know if you have access to this, the staff report did have it, it was available, it shows the radius within a mile, and census tracts don't necessarily align where liquor licenses are, they use major streets or other streets and so forth, but it does show, as you described, you know, other locations that you have on-sale or off-sale licenses, so, I don't know, if somebody had an extra copy of the staff report, maybe we could share that with Mr. Morish, so, yeah. Manuel, do you want to?
Yeah, Manuel, he is senior planner. Yeah, with census tracts, as I explained, it, it runs on populations based on the census tracts that they do every, census that they do every 10 years, and a lot of times at an intersection could be four different census tracts. And so that's why, since we've taken over doing these about four years ago, we've offered you the one-mile radius to show you that there are liquor, a lot of liquor licenses within those other census tracts. So like I said, ABC does use census tracts as determining how many are allotted in each census tract, and this particular census tract is, is 99% residential. This is the only commercial, pretty much, in the census tract, is this one little corner, and it's undeveloped. So that's why this census tract had zero, this would be the first one, but it's not necessarily representation of what's around there, like I said, so that's why we give you the one-mile radius.
And the exhibit that was in the staff report does show, I think, as your count, some of these, I guess, maybe have gone away, but you showed, I think, 11.
Thirteen.
Thirteen active licenses in the area, pretty much coin size with Mr. Morish.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay. Next, we have Mr. Nicole.
Good afternoon. I'm Nicole Uli, I have been sworn. I live on the corner of Antelope and Watt, in those condominiums. We have seen an increase in homeless people. And there are lots more cars. Just in our condos, we have over 50 children that attend any of the five schools. There are four elementary schools within a mile radius and one high school. I see several children riding their bikes or walking to school in the morning, and I know that one of those children would get hit. Watt Avenue is extremely busy, right there at the light, at Watt and Antelope, there are several car accidents every year, and when it comes to the kids, that's my main concern. I have an 11-year-old, sometimes she walks to school, and she can't take certain roads, and to walk by that gas station at 11 years old, it's just not right. There is an apartment complex directly north of us, and on the other side of the proposed gas station and convenience store, there is another apartment complex. So you have two big apartment complexes and a condo. What would this do to our property values? If the gas station were to go in, would that drop our property values, or would it increase our property values? We're really concerned about the high traffic, turning in and turning out, that's another major concern. Watt Avenue is really booked, especially in the morning, and around 5 o'clock, and having to add extra time because you've got 100-plus cars just to go pick up your child, isn't fair for any parent. Like I said, our crime has gone up, and we are very concerned about the alcohol, the drug use that comes with that. The gentleman before me stated the homeless, and it's... When your child finds a needle in the street, it's very sad. And no child should have to go through that. And with the alcohol and that location, with all the crime, it's just going to get worse. And I think that we shouldn't, we shouldn't allow it. So I am opposed to this. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. Okay, and then Robin, Robin Poehl? And Robin's the last speaker, I've signed up, so if there's anybody else who wishes to address this, get a form in, otherwise Robin will be the last speaker.
Hi, my name is Robin Poehl, and I have been sworn.
Thanks, Robin.
Basically, I concur with everything that this gentleman said, and also with what Nicole said, I am also in that condominium, which is right around the corner. So I have lots of time. The concern that, that additionally, that we have, like Nicole said, about the homeless population also. The gentleman said that there are two gas stations across the street, one of them already has a recycling center, so anytime you go into this, this food store here, it's walled with homeless people because of this recycling center. Now, once, these are not 24-hour establishments, so once they close, they're all going to matriculate over to the 24-hour store. And this sounds really bad, and I mean no disrespect, but they're going to go over there and go through their garbage. Okay, and like I said, I mean no disrespect. This side has already been dealt with, okay? They, it's, it's a new place, okay, and everything, unfortunately, it just brings a different clientele. The gentleman talked about a wall going around the area. If you were to go to that wall and go less than 50 feet, you will find the entrance to Crest Gate North. I like to say I live by Nicole. There is no wall, it's an open driveway, you go into that driveway and you're there, you're in open space, there's a hill here, a hilly knoll, from there you have my front door, and the front door of maybe five other people. We've seen it happen already, I was out walking my dog the other night, looked up in the hill, there they were, coming down. It's increased dramatically in the last 12 years. A lot of it has to do with the fact that initially it was a prostitution concern down Watt Avenue, almost, well, by Light Rail, and then as they cleaned up that area, everybody moved our way. So, as far as the information that I gathered, and I really concur with everything that they have said, is I, too, physically went out to count establishments. I used, excuse me, I used the one-mile radius, and I found that within this one mile, and I was very diligent about the mile, lest anybody have any questions, I found 17 establishments that you could purchase wine or beer. I found seven establishments, they will serve you wine and beer, because we, we have very few restaurants or anything like that in the area. There are six gas stations within this one-mile radius. Let's see. That's really the concern, it's like I said, that we're having is the homeless, the lack of security, not necessarily on, on the individual that wants to build there, but also within our, our community, we only have a few lights here and there, that's it. And all they have to do is walk less than 50 feet, they're in our driveway, and there's no fencing at all, so it's very easy access.
Could I just ask, staff, is there a map that shows the complex where Robin resides, that 50-foot?
I'm not sure that we have a graphic.
Is it, is it across the street on Blackfoot?
No, it's, it's as you go, here's the new, the new establishment, the corner of Blackfoot and Watt Avenue. If you were to go out, take a left, go less than 50 feet, you will find Crest Gate North Complex. Go into the complex.
Down, down Blackfoot, Robin? Down Blackfoot?
No, no, go down Watt, and then you're going to go into the complex.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, no idea, yeah, I just, I was trying to follow you.
Yeah, yeah. And like I say, it's less than 50 feet. We already have that issue, we do have bushes on the back fence, and you'll find them already sleeping there, especially in the winter. It's, like I said, they are going to come from the other areas, and they will matriculate over, and unfortunately, depending upon what the other property is being used for, again, that's all-new area. And unfortunately, the individuals come, either walk or they ride their bike, they all know each other, they know where to go, they know what areas, they know when we put our trash out, they, they're very, very resourceful, and so.
You're opposed.
Am I done? Yes, I am!
Thank you, Robin.
All right, thank you.
All right, those are the only speakers I had, so I'll bring it back to, to staff then, LeAnn, and then obviously to supervisors.
Yeah, I'm not sure I have too much additional to add, it sounds like you want to have a discussion about whether you want to look at the restricted uses. There are a number of topics that have come up where we could look at more specific conditions. I don't want to try to do that in committee here today. If we were going to look at condition changes, I would prefer to continue it so that we can work those up and get them in the record. The areas that you talked about were specifics about the lighting, there's generalized lighting conditions in there. It's not as detailed as described today by the applicant. We have information about the cameras, we could detail that out further, and you also had questions about the vacuum noise, which is generally has noise conditions, but there isn't something specific about the vacuums. So those were the areas where I took some notes, if you want to contemplate this item, and you, if you want us to work on conditions a little bit more, that would be, those would be the areas that I would, I've heard so far to focus on.
Thanks. I'll turn to supervisor just a second, just a, the last question, though, so, was there, has there been any discussion with, it looked like that block wall was going to wrap around that side, but to the description that Ms. Poehl just made about easy access into the complex where she lives, it sounded like it's open from the street to get to the lane that then accesses their properties, their condominiums and so forth, has there been, was there any look at that in the staff review of this, in the adjacent property?
We look, we did, our focus was on requiring fencing of the site, not an off-site fencing recruit, condition. And there is a.
Well, I would just say that I think there's some legitimacy to what's being said here. Obviously, people's behavior is not going to be necessarily dictated by the land use decision here, but you're blocking their ability to go either use this site, because you're going to, you know, proposing to do wrought iron with a block wall and so forth, so they don't go there, but they take another path of least resistance, which is immediately to the south, looks like there's some areas that folks could find cover in without, again, having any particular site map and so forth, and again, I don't know that that's the applicant's responsibility. Mr. Tobin, did you wish to?
Sure. So I think what I understand is, the question is, there's, there's the condos here, and then there's the actual.
Lane.
Okay.
Yeah.
Talking here? Okay, so here, here's Watt.
So the apartments next to us are not on there, and we're underneath the apartments. We are right there at Watt and Antelope.
No.
Yeah.
They're down the street.
Antelope, so you're not in this picture.
They're down the street.
Yeah, yeah, she's off the map, Peter.
Our units, our condos are yes, back, I meant 7661, which is all the way to the.
Okay, so there's no, there's currently an existing wrought iron fence along here anyways, so we're not changing any, any connections between these two properties or anything like that.
Okay, we can't have, we can't have any side conversations if you want to come to the, that's okay, it's all right. Okay. All right, Ms. Frost, Sue. Thanks, LeAnn.
Well, I, I just, I wanted to respond to some of the things that have been said. I, in, in general, I support this project. I'm sensitive to your concerns and appreciate that you have come down. I know the CPAC, you know, the majority of the CPAC voted to approve the project. I, after having a conversation with the developer, I, you know, relating to crime and homelessness, crime, I felt, you know, I, Antelope, we have had a lot of crime in our little business area, and that's one of the reasons some of the property owners are coming together and talking about property-based improvement districts, and how can they invest more to, to work on that? But to my knowledge, as a general rule, when you have capital improvement into an area, when someone moves in and they invest millions of dollars on a corner and, and there's activity there, you're not going to have as much homeless issues, and, I mean, it will actually improve those situations, and I kind of feel that they have been sensitive, the way the Planning Commission has, has worked on this. The wrought iron fence, the sound wall, the, the lighting is going to help with that homeless situation on that corner, but I, I don't know, I don't think it matters whether you have development or not, the homeless are in the parkways, they're in the city, they're everywhere, and it, that problem, that's a whole nother problem that we are working on. What really comes to my mind is that the community in Antelope has, has really wanted to have a sense of, you know, a downtown, they've wanted a sit-down restaurant, and they want, you know, they want less crime, and they want community. The challenge with Antelope is that everyone who lives in Antelope works somewhere else, and so they're driving out of Antelope to go to work all day, and so it's hard to attract those businesses for those sit-down restaurants, and, you know, there's a certain rooftops, a number of rooftops that you have to have in order to support so that the businesses can come. And so I, I think the fact that this, and I did talk to the developer, and they, they said, we, we want to try to look for a restaurant, you know, we're going to, that's going to be our goal, is to try to find something like that, I, there's no, I know there's no guarantee, and I hate to be picky, but, you know, some of these other types of businesses are not going to bring the element that we need more of in Antelope. And so that's, you know, I know it's a little bit of a delay, but continuing it, I, to, to make sure we address quality on that, you know, quality for the future. sure we address quality on that, you know, quality for the future of the community is important. So, so I'm prepared to, I guess, move to continue the item so that we can just update the, the list of restrictions and also hear whatever my colleagues have to say about it.
I just want to ask you a question.
Can I just say that really, it's not going to be a continuance, it would be a direction to return back to Planning Commission with, with the revised list of uses.
Okay.
And then it would come back to the board after that.
Okay, and as it says, continue, but I'll send that back to you, and it would be back, okay. Question of Staff, could we not restrict the use in the Phase 2, or require that it be for restaurant use? Make it very limited?
I guess you could make it extremely limited to restaurant only. I don't know if you want to contemplate some other retail activities.
I don't, I don't think it's a good idea because that's got to be market-driven. I mean, there has to be, that, that could limit what a person can do with their property because, you know, there's going to, it's going to take time in order for that demographic to serve that type of business. They've tried in the past, from what I understand, and it hasn't worked out, so to demand it isn't going to work. It has to be market-driven, I think.
Okay. All right, Supervisors?
Thank you. To this restrictive list, I would echo what Supervisor Frost said, that you add smoke, vaping, and hookah shops, and convenience stores. It looks like liquor store, I think it's under Lodge Fraternal Hall there, but I'd like to see this attachment cleaned up here with all the things that we suggested.
What's a hookah shop?
It's along the same line as smoking and vaping.
Oh.
And open all night.
Yeah. And then I know the developer said that the car wash would be locked up at night, the openings, but I'd like to see that as a condition. And the LED motion detector light in that back area as a condition also.
Okay. Just get any thoughts?
So I will second the motion to move it back to Planning Commission with all the changes that have been suggested.
As soon as possible, if, if that, I know that's a lot to ask, but...
Yeah. Happy to prioritize it.
Okay, so the motion then is to remand this back to the Planning Commission for inclusion of some additional prohibited uses, which will be, again, noticed, and then returned to this board, probably in a fairly short turnaround, probably four to six weeks, I imagine. So that is the motion, and I, just before we vote, I would just say that this certainly has given me some reason for pause. Again, I was on this board in 1998 and have some vague recollection of some of the discussion about why we limited it, and I think the discussion about convenience markets attached to service stations and proliferation, there's been obviously some progress made, but I think some of those interfaces stuck me very difficult. The issue obviously of homelessness and some of the other elements, probably is not a new phenomenon, but probably somewhat newer to the suburban communities, and we're seeing more and more of it in all the districts that are represented here on this board. So again, I'm certainly okay with looking to add to the list. I don't, the alcohol sales, I think it was clearly reflected, there's plenty of opportunity to, to purchase both on- and off-sale alcohol beverages in the neighborhood. I think the condition, I'll just say this, to the condition to limited to 10:00 PM cutoff, I think helps cut down some of the very late-night activities, but nonetheless still makes it available, and obviously with the pattern of walking to and from the school. I was, again, interested to note, my last comment on this, that it wasn't more interaction. We, and we notified the school district, I guess parents were notified, I appreciate that Nicole was here and has, you know, spoken as relates to her family, because I know in other cases, we've had that, you know, quite a big turnout about, you know, proximity of, of service station uses, particularly with the PCNs for the liquor sales. And again, as one mom who was here speaking today, I appreciate her comments as well. So I'm starting to reserve judgment until it comes back to us. I'm not quite sold on this yet, but I'll support the motion to, to send it back to the Planning Commission today.
And just to be, just to be clear, it's only Item 35 that needs to go back to Planning Commission, so Item 36 will just tag along, I guess, when it comes back?
Just hold, hold Item 36, yeah. Okay, we're holding the PCN, so. All right, so that's the motion. Everyone clear on that? Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Okay, nobody, we'll be re-noticing, so the folks here that spoke will get re-noticed, correct?
Correct. Yeah, when it goes to the Planning Commission.
Yeah, thank you.
And then when it comes back.
All right, very good. Thank you all for being here this afternoon. Okay, we do have an off-agenda request to address the board. Mr. Warren, and I've spoken with one of my colleagues, and while I'm going to allow some additional time, I'm going to give you 10 minutes on the clock today, David, to allow time to allow you to...
I promise I will not even come close.
That's okay, but I want you to feel rushed and certainly willing to do that. So if you'll just identify yourself, and I know you handed some information out, and I'll reset the clock, and you have at it.
And I'm told I have to tell someone that I have a PowerPoint coming.
Okay, so we have a PowerPoint for this one, so...
Yeah, they're working on it.
Let's see if we can get that up.
And if not, I've provided you with the same papers, so they're, they're all written in front of you.
Okay, hang on a second, we're going to, let's get it up, we'll just hold on your presentation for a moment.
There it is.
There we go, okay, and you have a clicker right there, okay, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Warren?
To quote Monty Python, something a little different. I am here today concerning emergency medical transportation. The county has, has what is called the Emergency Medical Services Agency, and they have established a protocol, Protocol 5050.13, which determines where and how a patient is to be transported in an ambulance. The great thing about it is that it provides direction to the paramedics and ambulance drivers in Sacramento. The downside is that it provides for one-size-fits-all, and therein lies the problem. There is no way to obtain a variance. In my particular instance, I have a pacemaker due to my years of youthful exuberance, and, which has resulted in occasions where I've developed bradycardia, where my heart will actually stop, which is not a good thing, but also I have another problem, what's called atrial fibrillation, which is asynchronous tachycardia, which means my heart goes too fast and eventually will blow up. Not a good thing either. The pacemaker stops it from slowing down to nothing, but it doesn't do anything with the asynchronous tachycardia. Because I have a pacemaker, there are certain medical tests that can be done only at hospitals that are aware of my medical implant. Some pacemakers are not MRI-compatible. If you don't have one of those, you're in MRI, you're going to find your pacemaker out of your chest and on top of the MRI, not a good medical thing. So if you go to a hospital which does not have the information concerning my pacemaker, they will not provide an MRI. The protocol, and I'm sorry, without my grandchildren, I'm not good at this stuff. I know it's very small, but I provided you a full-sized print, lists the fact that if a paramedic arrives and I'm in atrial fibrillation, they're to take me to the nearest medical facility. In my particular case, the nearest medical facility is Mercy San Juan Hospital. Now, the paramedics in Citrus Heights, who arrive in Citrus Heights, and first of all, I want to compliment them, they do a great job. I've had, I've had the unfortunate circumstance to have used their service six times, and I'm grateful each time I see them, will transport me to Sutter Roseville, they will transport me to Kaiser, but they, or they will transport me to Mercy, but they will not take me to UC Davis. Now, the importance of, for me to go to UC Davis is that's where my medical records concerning my pacemaker and my other medical conditions are located, and even though we live in the computer age, Mercy San Juan Hospital cannot acquire in an emergent situation my medical records from UC Davis. When I arrived in my first, on my birthday several years ago, my birthday present was a pacemaker, and two days later I went to Afib and had to go to the hospital. They wanted to do an MRI, but as soon as they found out that I didn't, I had a pacemaker, they refused to do so. Now, there are two schools of thought. One is, a person who has a potential stroke should use a CT first, then an MRI. My neurologist is of the belief that the MRI is the primary and best source to determine my medical condition. Being transported to Mercy San Juan, over my objection, prevented me from getting the Cadillac version of the test. Now, there are three issues that I wish to address. First, should a patient who's aware of his medical necessity be allowed to pick the hospital of their choice? Second, should the patient know that there's a transportation lag? In other words, if I go to UC Davis from Citrus Heights, it takes longer than going to Mercy San Juan. But if my medical records and my medical information are immediately available, I am, would like to make the choice to know that the doctors who see me when I arrive there know what to do, instead of when I arrived at Mercy San Juan saying, "Why are you here? And what can we do because we don't know what your medical condition is?" There's nothing worse than laying in the ER with one doctor saying, "I think he needs a pacemaker," where I had the bandage right here on my shoulder, another guy saying, "He needs a central line," another one saying, "I think he's in pulmonary distress," and a third one saying, "I think he's in renal failure," whereas I go, when I get to UC Davis, they knew exactly what would happen. That's the problem. Last, this protocol provides that if a paramedic follows my request, they are subject to loss of license or suspension because they didn't follow the protocol. They should not have to be facing that. The Supreme Court has decided that I can refuse medical, medical care. It's up to, after you listen to a doctor, if you don't like their advice, you can do what you want. That is very important, because if you're in an ambulance and you want to go to the hospital, and they say, the paramedic says, "You're crazy," I say, "Okay, take me anyway." If I'm in the hospital, they'll do it. If I'm at the doctor, they'll do it, but the ambulance will not do it. There's a certain irony in the valve there. Also, if I have, if I'm informed and I know what my emergency is, and I tell the, the paramedics, "This is what's best for me," they should conform and not follow the protocol. Now, let's assume for the moment I'm unconscious. My very beautiful wife, who's sitting here in the audience, has my medical directive. She is authorized to terminate life support in the hospital, but she can't tell the paramedics where to take me for transportation. Now, I have up before you, it's a nine-minute drive to Mercy San Juan. It's a 17-minute drive to Roseville. It's a 14-minute drive to Kaiser, and it's a 23-minute drive to UC Davis. I'm betting my life that my life will be better preserved at UC Davis because of their knowledge of my medical experience. Now, this isn't about money, it's, I'm not an HMO patient, I'm a PPO patient, I can go anywhere I want. My concern is about the experience I had at Mercy San Juan. I want to compliment the nurses, they're great. The doctors are in terrible straits because of the 51/50 patients that are running around the hospital, literally running through the ER naked, but they couldn't, the doctor who said, "You're my, I'm your cardiologist, I've never seen you before, how am I supposed to treat you?" That's not fair. Now, I know you can't do anything today, I don't expect you to, but I think that what I would like to have, because I've already tried speaking to Dr. Garzon, who's in charge of this committee, asking him to make the change repeatedly, and you have a copy of my last letter, which I sent, which was sent to him, and I said, I've got three items for you. There's a memo, there's a letter I sent, and the exhibits that you're seeing today. He doesn't care. He believes that he's doing the right thing. I'm not going to disagree with him. In most instances, he's right, but one-size does not fit all. My negative experiences at Mercy San Juan, as you might guess, I'm Jewish, so they asked me, by way of worst-case example, "What would, can we get you something to eat?" I said, "Please, I'm Jewish, I have certain dietary habits," and the nurse proudly walked up to me, pulled off the lid, and provided a cheese omelet and three sausages. Now, the irony should express to you the frustration of the treatment which I received at the hospital. I can tell you a few other good stories, but I'll skip that for now because you have other things to do. I have provided each of you with proposed amendment. The amendment is very simple and straightforward. It says, if the paramedic says to you, "You're crazy to go where you want," and you say, "I don't care, I want to go to UC Davis," then they all have recording devices in the ambulances, they have doc, they have pads where you can sign and inform consent and say, "I'm willing to risk my life by going to the place that I feel I can get the best medical attention." Now, I've spoken with Metro Fire. There's the additional cost of transportation from Citrus Heights to UC Davis is covered by the insurance. They don't care. As a matter of fact, the only reason, when I talked to the captain, who was then in charge of paramedics, the only reason they won't do is because this committee prohibits it. Now, I've had the unfortunate circumstance subsequent to this of being faced with the same medical condition. My wife had to drive me to UC Davis because the paramedics wouldn't do it. My wife had what we believe to be a stroke, thank God it was only a TIA. I had to drive her to UC Davis because the paramedics won't take her. I should not, and my wife should not, have to put our lives at risk because a committee says that one-size-fits-all. I ask that you call this up as an agenda item and ask why we can't have an informed consent exception to the protocol. It's just that simple. Now, unfortunately, there are people who abuse the paramedic system, but they're going to continue to do so, but reasonable, well-educated and sophisticated individuals such as myself who know the risk, who want to make sure we don't die, should not be prohibited from taking advantage of the medical service. Thank you. See, I told you I'd get it done before.
Yeah, you did, you did within, within 12 seconds of the spare. Thank you, David, for your presentation, and certainly we've received the correspondence. I guess, Mr. Gill, should we refer this to you? It's obviously not an action item today, but as I understand it, we have this advisory committee that, you know, recommends to us, but are they the ones that actually set the policy, or is that something that's adopted by this board? I mean, there's a lot behind this, I don't know, Krista, whether County Council could advise us on this as well, but certainly suggestions here.
I'll look into it and give a report back to the board.
Okay, all right, so did you get copies of the?
No, I got it.
Okay.
Could I also be provided with a date when this follow-up should occur?
Not yet, but we, when we get one set, we will let you know, and, and so obviously we'll have to go back, but it won't be long, so it may not be the next meeting on 22nd, but we'll try to...
No, I understand. I'm not the only problem you have in the county.
Yeah, so we will, we will keep you informed, I know you've been talking, you've talked with several offices, and certainly submitted correspondence, so we will endeavor to let you know as soon as we get the date.
Okay, just one last item. I had the good fortune to meet with your chiefs of staff, and I provided them with all my correspondence back and forth, so that when I came today, there would be some degree of preparation.
Thank you, and they were very good. I know it was mine provided to me, so, thank you, thank you. Okay, thank you, Mr. Warren, Mrs. Warren, for being here, and we'll take that under advisement. So with that, that concludes, let's go to County Executive Comments first.
None to that.
Okay, Board members? Any? Last? Okay, none from the chair. That being said, then, we will be adjourned and be back in here on the 22nd of August.